Martin?
Here.
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Fowler? Insalaco?
Present.
Thank you. If everybody please stand for the prayer and the pledge, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Barber.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening and we thank you for this beautiful day, for this beautiful city, and we just pray, Lord, your grace and your mercy would be upon it, Lord, that you would give wisdom to these leaders who are making decisions tonight for us, and we just pray that you would just be with them in all that they do. We pray for the public servants who risk their lives each day in the electric department, the fire department, the police department, and we just, again, thank you for the grace you give us each and every day, in Jesus' name, all God's people, said.
Amen.
Amen.
I pray.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Come in.
Motion.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. If anybody were going to go to communication, anybody like to pull one or have one read, please let me know.
Mayor, I'd like to read number one, so in, based on that, I'd like to move to accept and file two through five.
Two through five, set motion second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
And communication one?
Yes.
I would like for it to be read in its entirety, please. Thank you.
This is an email from David Cook, City Engineer, to the mayor. Mayor, we have been out to Ms. Hayes' house on many occasions. She had complained of water running off the road and being under the house, under her house. She also mentioned that there was a drainage pipe that was running underneath her house that was causing this issue. After initial inspection, it was found that a 12-inch concrete pipe begins on Willow Street and runs west through the residence' backyards. The pipe runs underneath the southwest corner of the house at 408 College Park Street before turning 45 degrees to the northwest. It is unknown where the pipe runs to or comes from. I'm attaching our original visit notes from April 2023. We cannot find record of this pipe in our inventory. After looking into the issue, we decided that College Park Street would be a good candidate for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG project. After visiting with Bailey Nolan of Ward One and Ward One Council members, we all were in agreement. Davidson Engineering designed the project with this in mind, to prevent water from running off of the street onto the property. The work included curb and gutter on West 19th Street as well. Gene Summers Construction, Inc., was the contractor for the job, and notice to proceed was given on July 28, July 8, 2024. The project was substantially completed on November 26, 2024. I visited with Bob Summers multiple times regarding the issue Ms. Hayes was complaining about. He also noticed and relayed to me that her property is the lowest point of the block. Water falling on private property will naturally slope to her house. Prior to construction, we plugged the pipe with concrete where it was exposed along Willow Street on May 2, 2024. This was in an attempt to prevent water from getting into the pipe. According to the county, the house was built in 1945, which means the installation of the pipe was likely before. One option would be to remove the pipe completely, but it is on private property as it runs across three, possibly four, properties behind houses. I would be nervous about removing the pipe up against or under Ms. Hayes' house as it could cause potential damage to the house. David Cook, Chief City Engineer.
Moved to accept and file.
Second.
Motion to accept and file.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, I'm going to pull R-2561, and I thought, on that one, I'd ask for a voice vote on any of the rest of them, so I'll say.
Just for clarification, you're not pulling it.
Hold it, I'm sorry, I appreciate you saying, I am holding R-2561 for further discussion. Meanwhile, I will ask for a voice vote on favor of I from 20.
Discussion, please.
All right.
I'd like to pull R-2559, please.
Okay. You want, you want to pull that, correct?
Yes, I want it.
From the consent.
From consent agenda.
Okay, got you. Anybody, Mr. Hamilton?
R-2558, please.
R-2558. You want, what, you want to pull that also?
Yes.
All right, we'll pull those two for discussion, then meanwhile, I'm asking for a voice vote on 57 and 60. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Let's go. You're going to ask me about R-2558, and I'm saying calling it.
R-2558?
Please.
Sorry. Resolution amending the 2025 budget for the City of North Little Rock to include additional expenses in certain budgets.
Good for adoption.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Discussion. I'm wondering, how much is this, the amount that we're amending the budget to?
Mr. Amber, please go forward.
So this budget amendment is for $3.6 million approximately, and we already had $3 million in our 2024 budget, which at the April 14 meeting, the PO role that we usually do, where we roll outstanding POs and budgets, will be coming to you all, so the remainder of that $3 million will be in that legislation. And then in the 2025 budget, we have $6 million, so that will bring our total to $12,641,032.
For the conference center?
Yes.
And is that the total cost of the conference center?
So there's a contract.
I'm sorry, it's a construct, is that the total projected cost at this point?
I'm not the construction manager over the project, but this covers the architect and the construction manager, so it should cover the construction.
Very good. And the $12 million, the building is for, the building's a conference center, this may not be a question for you, you're not the construction manager, where's this building going to be?
It's going to be right here across where the city services used to be at 120 Main.
Downtown?
Yes.
Mayor, how does a downtown conference center benefit our city in its entirety? I think this is a good opportunity for us to talk about how investing in downtown is a great thing.
And I can answer that as well, it's going to increase.
I'd like for the mayor to answer.
First, for many years, I've been talking about event center, in fact, it was brought up with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Smith, Mayor Smith. With that, so many times, and I've used this many times, let's take S.A. Jones, they've come to me at the, at the chamber, and now even here, and they say, I'd like to have a place for, say, 400 people, sit and eat, and for the last, let's say, 10, 12 years that I've been involved with this, I'd say, you've got to go to Little Rock. I brought this up to almost everybody in the city, we've talked to our agenda downtown council, we've talked to the Chamber of Commerce, I've visited with it with numerous people, no one yet has come up against saying we want an event center in our city. In fact, one of the things that we have to do is, so, we've already getting calls to rent the event center, we're in the process of that, we've hired somebody, CBM is in the construction of it as of now, I expect to have the event center for our city, not just our agenda, but completely our city, open and hopefully be ready to be ringing out, let's say, next March, I'm hoping, so that's what it looks like.
That's good news, that's very good news.
So that will benefit us, as you said.
Yeah, why, I mean, why do we want them, that's a great point, you said they have to go to Little Rock, why do we not want them to go to Little Rock, why do we want them to stay here?
I'm the mayor of North Little Rock, and I'd rather have them here, if you want to go to Little Rock, that's another question.
Ooh, I do not, I like their tax money to stay right here, and.
And you just answered my question.
But how does, so is investing downtown, how does that benefit my neighborhood, Lakewood?
It's very easy, it brings in tax dollars.
It brings in tax dollars, investment downtown brings in tax dollars.
When people eat, when they stay in our hotel rooms, when they shop at our stores, when they drive to our service stations, if they, where they're here, if they're visiting friends in town, in fact, I had one of my employees that went and visited friends that was driving through today, they're very excited what's happening in our city, not just downtown, but in our city. I visited Ms. Hart today about it, and I think everybody from east to west, not everybody's going to be for it, but everybody is seeing a positive attitude of what it brings to our
Every single person I've talked to is for it, as am I, I just think it's a very, it's important to note that downtown investment benefits Lakewood, it benefits Amboy.
It does.
We don't pay for sanitation in North Little Rock.
You're right.
We don't pay for sanitation. Little Rock pays more than $23 a month in sanitation, and we don't. Some of that's because of the tax investment we have downtown.
Well, I think you just answered your own question, you had me, invest.
It's investment.
It's an investment in our city, for all parts of our city, now whether you're Lakewood, Dixie, North Little Rock, Eastgate, Bearin Cross, wherever you are, you have an investment, and just like I explained to you, while I go, S.A. Jones, who's had many, many, many graduates, they come back here every year to have their reunion, and I hate sending them to Little Rock.
I've been speaking to Ms. Bernie about that for a long time, so I'm thrilled that we have this, and I appreciate your leadership on the issue, bringing $12 million downtown. Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir, thank you, very nice. I guess I'm going to ask, there was a motion to accept and file on this? Prove it.
I believe Mr. Baxter made the motion, I second it.
There you go. Thank you.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler? I'm sorry, Insalaco?
Yes.
It's okay, thank you all very, very much. R-2559, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to rehabilitate property for certain real property located at 4509 Haywood Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Good for adoption.
Second, and I have discussion.
Okay.
And this is, and I didn't also call on R-2560, it's the same company, but on these rehab agreements, I'd just like to have somebody here to make sure that they understand and they give us their word that they're going to do these.
Is anybody here from owner of Newman Capital Ventures, LSE, on R-2559, is anybody here?
Because these are out of New York, and I want to make sure that we have somebody local.
Amy. Okay, so where are we?
On the motion?
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's all right, go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
On the motion, Ross?
Okay, wait, I'm going to ask a question here, so R-2560, I didn't ask for that one to be pulled, and we've already voted on it, and it is the same contractor, the same company, and so they're not here on both of them.
Well, right now, what's on the floor is a motion and a second to vote when we get done with that, and Diane's the parliamentarian, but if you wanted to make a motion to expunge the vote on 60, you could do that, but we need to finish what we're doing here first, is that right, Diane? Okay, thank you.
So back to R-2559, we've got a motion and a second, I believe?
We do.
All right.
On the motion, Ross?
No.
Hamilton?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
I guess no.
Insalaco?
No.
Motion failed.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Do you want to make a motion to expunge the vote on R-2560?
Yes.
There's a motion, and four of us, who's their motion, is their second?
Second.
There's a second.
On the motion to expunge, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
I let the owner know that the rehab agreement did not pass.
But now we have to vote on 60.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry, you're right, I got ahead of myself. So go ahead and call that one again. 58, I mean, I'm sorry.
We're expunged to vote on 60 right now.
When you just expunged, go ahead and call that one again.
Sorry, hang on, it's there, I got it.
Now are we going to call R-2560?
Yes, we're going to rehab to recall it, that's what we're going to have to do, if they have expunged the vote, now we're going to have to recall R-2560.
Okay.
See how it goes.
Do we, do we need a motion?
Well, you need to read it.
You still got to read it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to rehabilitate property for certain real property located at 4503 Haywood Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Rob, did you have something?
Only thing I want to say is about R-2559 and R-2560, I know that both of these locations are in Ward Two, so if we pull them, we'll just hold them until the next meeting to get somebody here, or what, what's going on?
On 59, we can't hold it, it has already failed, if, if the mayor, or you, or Ms. Hart, or any other person wanted to sponsor to bring it back again, then we can bring it back as a new resolution. On 59, on 60, it hadn't been voted on yet, but it does have a motion and second, and it's on the floor to be voted on now. I think it does, has it been motioned and?
Yes.
Yes, it is, it is.
And we said that the company is out of New York?
Yes.
And we have problems with out of state, okay.
All right, let's go ahead, call it, you got it.
On the motion, Ross?
I just want to say, I'm not voting against it because it's out of state, I'm voting it because they were told to show up, and we, they know that they need to have someone here. No.
Hamilton?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
No.
Insalaco?
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Onto new business, R-2562, Mayor Hartwick.
Please read it.
That one needs to be withdrawn, the owner has started demoing it. Can you withdraw? Can you withdraw that one? The owner's taking care of, doing the rehab at the request of Code.
All right, so R-62562, you want me to withdraw?
Withdraw, please.
All right, we'll do it, no problem. Code, for Lisa, you're here, right? You agree to that? Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
R-2563, Mayor Hartwick?
Anything on this one I need to know about?
I don't think so.
All right.
I think this one's normal.
Thank you. Read it for me.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed at the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 411 Meadow Park Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Before we vote on that, let me go ahead and call this. I have a public hearing on this, so those, I'm gonna convene a public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against R-2563, please come forward. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come forward. Scene and adjournment.
Move for adoption.
Your second?
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R-25, oh, I'm sorry. This book's a little bit different. O-2523, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting the annexation of certain territory to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, approving the schedule of services to be extended to said area, assigning said territory to Ward 1, declaring an emergency, first reading.
May we suspend the readings?
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Move for adoption, and then I...
Second.
There's a motion to adopt and a second, but let's stop for a second for discussion.
Okay. And I didn't know, JD Ashley, with the Ashley groups here, if he wanted to speak on this or say anything about it, about what's going in there, or why it's being annexed, or... It's up to you. Okay.
JD, I gotta have you introduce yourself and everything, okay? Say full name.
I'm JD Ashley, one of the partners in the real estate at Proto Junction, their mid-state truck plaza. We have a truck facility out of Chicago called Road Ranger, wanting to purchase 10 acres of our property there. They will be investing in the vicinity of...
Guys, hang on, JD. Can y'all put that back up on screen for me in the back, please? Go ahead, JD, I'm sorry.
Forgot where I was at.
Anyway, they're wanting, they're wanting to invest somewhere
in the vicinity of $17 million out there, 15 to 17 million. They will provide 25 to 30 full-time jobs, 15 to 20 part-time jobs. The tax revenue, I don't know what the tax revenue is gonna be to the city, how much, but their gross sales will be 25 to 30 million a year there. So, and they will clean up that area very nicely out there. And hopefully, we've got another 10 acres there that we can improve on after that goes in.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Hart?
I wanted to ask, on this particular property, which we appreciate, who would put in things like streetlights for something like this in that area?
That's, I don't know that. I know they'll put their own lighting on their facility. As for the streetlights, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I think Mr. Powell may know.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Thomas Powell, Thomas Engineering. We ran this through Planning Commission, and they have the standard requirements for road improvements, which includes streetlights and a sidewalk along the frontage.
So the developer puts...
Developer. Short answer's developer.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I thought, thank you. Where are we now?
On the motion to adopt?
If I'm not mistaken, we suspend the rules, is there a crack? All right, Ms. Hampton.
I just wanted to note, and Councilmember Ross pointed this out earlier. It's very important. That Fairfax Crossing that we did over East McCain opened that area up. And that was done under, before my time, way before my time. It was a great, it was a great decision by the council to open that area up, so people aren't waiting on trains. Thank y'all.
I started joking, you stopped.
All right.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R-2524, Councilmember Ross?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please call it.
An ordinance rezoning certain real property located on East 13th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-2 to R-3 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 9263, declaring an emergency, first reading.
May we suspend the readings?
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart? Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Robson?
Question. Since they're changing this from I-2 to R-3, what are they gonna do? Build some homes?
Do we need to get this on the floor?
Yeah, can we get a motion and a second first?
Second.
Motion second.
And now?
Now, okay. That's about two.
We, I don't know if Belinda wants to get up and speak, Ms. Bernie, but this is something that Dark Hollow has been working on a long time, is to increase housing. Dark Hollow, they've had a lot of improvements in Dark Hollow, and this is just something to move it on for more housing.
Yes, I know this.
I gotta have you say your name if you don't mind, please.
I'm sorry. Belinda Bernie, Dark Hollow CDC.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our goal is to build more homes in the area. And those are one of the, some of the lots that we're focusing on.
Baxter?
And I was concerned, Mayor, as it relates to, you know, what kind of quote-unquote jurisdiction, whatever the Dark Hollow CDC has over this particular property, knowing that it's owned by other folks, some of which are in Little Rock. However, I understand that we have on file written instruments stating that the property owners are aware of the rezone and are looking forward to the opportunities that the new zoning provides them.
Correct.
Cool beans.
We did contact each property owner, and they asked us to represent them on this.
Ms. Ross?
And actually, we have one that's wanting to start building possibly in the future, hopefully?
Well, we have one lady that lives in Clarksville. She says she's ready to move back, and as soon as everything is approved, she'll start building.
Yep, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Belinda. Appreciate it.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris? Insalaco?
Yes.
O-2525, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance rezoning certain real property located at 3503 Highway 161 in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I-2 to R-4 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 9263, declaring an emergency, first reading.
May we suspend the readings?
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Their motion?
There, wait, I got Ms. Robinson. Go ahead and get the motion, then I'll call it.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Robinson?
We don't have to do the motion first?
We did.
Rezoning this piece of property from I-2 to R-4, what's going in there?
We've got the two applicants here.
Yeah, there he is.
I'm Dale Dag.
Tony Burnett.